For September 17, 2025. And we will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Eagleson, if you could lay this, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, public, and just for us.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item number two is roll call, and all councilors are present. Welcome, councilors. It's nice to see you. And before we move on to our -- before we move on to public forum, we'd first like to start with reading a very brief proclamation. The State of New Hampshire, the Honorable Town Council of the Town of Newmarket, a proclamation in the year 2025, Direct Support Professionals Appreciation Week, September 7 through 13, 2025. Whereas direct support professionals are essential to the physical, mental, and emotional security of New Hampshire citizens living with a disability, and direct support professionals' commitment and dedication to caring for others with disabilities personifies the true meaning of community. And whereas direct support professionals, direct caseworkers, personal assistants, and in-home care providers are the primary providers of publicly funded long-term supports and services for individuals with disabilities in Newmarket. And whereas direct support professionals assist New Hampshire citizens with disabilities in leading independent lives and are dedicated to developing close and trusted relationships with individuals, their families, and their community to provide a broad range of daily living support. And whereas direct support professionals' devoted commitment enriches lives by enabling community engagement of citizens impacted by disabilities and further strengthens communities by including people with disabilities. And whereas 2025 marks 18 years of celebrating direct support professionals' contributions to improving the lives of those they support and the communities they enrich. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, do hereby proclaim September 7 through 13, 2025, as Direct Support Professionals Appreciation Week, and call this to the attention of all citizens. In testimony whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, to be affixed the 17th day of September, 2025. All right. The next item on our agenda is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
Good evening. We're here this evening on behalf of the 25 volunteers of the USA 250 New Market 300 Committee. I'm Michael Provost of 16 Beach Street. I have Mistress Linda Hopie, Packers Falls Road, Master and Mistress Case of Cushing Road, along with Mr. Legault from our committee, if he'd like to stand and be recognized at this time. While we have been working hard raising funds and laying plans for our 250th and 300th anniversary in 2026 and 2027, a year-long celebration for our residents, businesses, and visitors. But why are we celebrating? It is important to note, Newmarket is somewhat unique. Unlike other communities that were granted or chartered, the residents of the Lamprey and the Squamskut villages banded together and petitioned the governor and executive council of the province of New Hampshire to be set aside from the parish of Exeter to form their own parish. At that time, you were fined for not attending church. There was a roving minister, and at times, they had to travel all the way to Seabrook in order to attend church. They were required to secure a minister and provide a seating for the minister, construct a meeting house, and hire a sexton. The first three selectmen were named Edward Hall, Andrew Glidden, and William Perkins to serve until the following March, when parish elections were to be held. The new parish was to be known as Newmarket. At this time, we would like to ask the Town Council Chair to step forward to receive a gift from the USA 250 New Market 300 volunteers. We have tonight a broadside of a copy done in Wentworth Cheswell's hand from the New Hampshire Provincial Papers that was cleaned up and made legible by local resident John Herman. This is a copy of the original that was signed by Lieutenant Governor John Wentworth. We also have a plain text copy for those who eyes aren't good at reading Old English. We hope these will be publicly displayed in the town hall so that our residents and visitors can appreciate the unique heritage in Newmarket. We thank you for your indulgence in receiving us this evening, and we look forward to us all celebrating together 300 years as a community. Those seeking more information, you're invited to visit us at www-newmarketnh300.info. Thank you, and with your indulgence, we shall now take our leave.
So I can put these in my house?
If that's what you called out.
Depends on the week. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:07. Next item on the agenda is to consider acceptance of minutes, and we have one set of minutes this evening. Those are the September 3 regular meeting minutes, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Warden. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Dornbluth, any discussion or changes? Okay. Seeing none, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Blaisberg?
I'm staying.
Counselor Lamatina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornbluth?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Connelly?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0-1.
Excellent. All right. Moving right along. Our next item is to consider nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations. And this evening, there are three. The first is Juliana Tyson, resignation from the Conservation Commission. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resignation with regret.
I will make that motion with regret.
Thank you, Counselor Warden. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Any discussion? Counselor Warden?
I just wanted to thank Julie for her hard work on the Conservation Commission. She's been a very active member. She's done a lot of work with Turtle Fest and a lot of other projects. She's starting a new adventure in Deerfield, and we wish her the best.
Excellent. We will miss you, Juliana. Thank you. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll.
Counselor Blaisberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornbluth?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Connelly?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. And we have two appointments, resignations for Lucas Fromm, so we're going to start with the first one. The first is Lucas Fromm's resignation as an alternate to the Conservation Commission. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resignation.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Any discussion? I only say that Lucas is resigning as an alternate because he is submitting an application for an appointment to the Conservation Commission, so we are very -- I'm very excited about that. Okay. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Blaisberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornbluth?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Connelly?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Excellent. And finally, the appointment of Lucas Fromm to the Conservation Commission with a term expiration of April 2027, and at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. I'm just very delighted that Lucas has decided to -- Lucas has applied to be appointed as a full member, and I'm really excited that he's willing to serve in his capacity. So thank you so much. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Blaisberg?
Aye.
Counselor Lamatina?
Aye.
Counselor Dornbluth?
Aye.
Counselor Eagleson?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Ward?
Aye.
Counselor Connelly?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. And at this time?
I was counting the microphones. I think we're missing one.
Okay. We may be missing one. At this time, we will turn it over to you for the report of the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on my written report is that I just wanted to update the town meeting, the budgets and budget schedule. Yes, I am working on the budget now. I did receive it last week, and should have something to the council shortly. But the important things, dates now that we have set, our election day is going to be Tuesday, March 10, 2026. I've discussed with superintendent of schools, and we're recommending Saturday, January 31 as deliberative session day, with the 7th as a snow day, just in case. One other change is that we're bumping up the budget workshop by one week to October 18. I have International City Mayor Disconference the following week, so I will be at the -- in Tampa. So that's the new schedule. The next item is the town valuation. The assessors have set the town valuation. I did provide a table with some of the new updates. Basically, we added $12 million of value to the town, so we went from 1.713 billion to 1.725 billion. Why is that important? For every dollar we raised through taxation, it used to be 1 million, we get $1,713,000. Now, we get $1,725,000. It's a 0.7% increase, which is not out of the ordinary for non-revaluation years. The next item is, I just want to make the council aware about the diversity, equity, and inclusion. When the July 1 state budget took effect, the trailer bill provision also became law. The budget -- the budget bill lists the funding allocation for agency programs, while the trailer bill contains policy changes needed to implement those allocations, and sometimes, this year a lot, includes controversial items that may not pass alone. They usually put things on there because nobody wants the budget to die, so they put things in there. One of those controversial laws is an amendment to RSA 21i. It broadly prohibits state agencies and political subdivisions, towns, from implementing, promoting, or engaging in diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. That means anything classifying individuals by protected characteristics per RSA 354A: 1 for demographic outcomes is off limits. The law also bans use of state funds for DEI-related trading, such as implicit bias at DEI assessments and race-based hiring or contracting preferences. It forbids entering into, renewing, or retaining contracts with DEI-related provisions. State agencies must file compliance reports with the Department of Administrative Services by October 1, and the Department of Justice will develop a process for municipalities to follow suit. On September 4, the United States District Court issued a temporary restraining order blocking the enforcement of the law, but only for public schools. The order effective until September 18 was granted for four school districts challenged the law. The judge noted that the district faced penalties tied to unrealistic compliance deadlines. Importantly, this does not apply to towns or other municipal government. Municipalities remain subject to the law's requirements. What's this mean for Newmarket? The Racial Equity and Inclusion Human Rights Advisory Committee, along with any related initiatives, should be discontinued, restructured, or given a new purpose to ensure they are not categorized under DEI terminology. Staff will proceed with review of current contracts that are in effect to identify any embedded DEI provisions and will provide updates accordingly. The order does not apply -- I'm sorry. Yeah, the order does not apply to towns, so Newmarket will proceed to compliance as scheduled. I'll keep the council updated as the Department of Justice provides local-level guidance and as the federal courts consider whether to extend or expand the stay. So basically, the DEI committee is on hold. We're going to look at all the contracts that we have out there, and once we get more guidance from the Department of Justice, we'll let the council know. Some guy has his hand up.
Counselor Dornbluth?
Thank you. The charge for that committee, do we -- can we get a copy?
Yep.
So that we can respond by?
Yep. I'm going to talk with other cities and towns, too, because I have them as well, to see what they're doing.
Yeah.
So we're all pretty much trying to be all on the same page in case something comes up.
Yeah, I'd just like to know what its charge was, so that we can either, if we continue to believe that the charge of the committee is valid and important, that we, you know, restructure it so that it complies with the law.
The next item that we recently met was representatives from Cassella Waste Management to review our current solid waste collection contract, which expires on December 31. The current agreement includes an extension clause that allows the term to be extended for additional three years upon written agreement of the parties. Staff recommends pursuing the extension to provide service continuity. We'll give the town time to explore future collection options. Across New Hampshire communities are beginning to shift away from manual curbside collection to automated side loaders, collection systems. So the trucks that have alarms, pick up your bin, throw it in. These systems, the benefits are their safety, cost efficiency, increased productivity, and environmental impact. Other communities have already moved in this direction. The city of Dover has contracted with Waste Management to replace its longstanding pay-as-you-throw bag system with an automated totter program beginning July 1, 2027. Each residence we provide there will be provided a 64-gallon trash totter and a 64-gallon recycling totter provided, serviced by the ASL trucks. City officials cite both operational realities that are moving towards automation and community benefits, such as reducing unsightliness and health concerns caused by trash bags after curb. So they're getting rid of their pay-as-you-throw system, like we have. Concord on the other side is doing a gradual transmission automation, and they did launch a two-year pilot program in July of '26 and moved citywide in '28. Cassella provides residents with standard totters and no additional charge. They have larger for recycling, smaller for trash. And I like Dover. Concord plans to retain its pay-as-you-throw bag system, requiring all bags to be bagged and placed inside the new totters. The pilot will give the city time to troubleshoot concerns, educate residents, and prepare a smoother citywide rollout. By extending our current agreement with Cassella, Newmarket can maintain stability in the short term while evaluating whether an automated totter-based system would be right fit for our community. And we'll also be able to look at both Dover and Concord to see, you know, do we continue with the pay-as-you-throw bag system or roll it into the tax rate?
Is that what Dover has decided?
Dover has decided to get rid of it, and it'll be rolling the cost into the taxes. Well, a couple -- we discussed it in the past a few years ago. It was interesting because we didn't do it because it was going to cost us a significant amount of money more, while Stratton was -- we used to go out to bid with Stratton and Newfield. Newfield's and Stratton's annual costs were going to go down. Ours was going to go significantly up, and we're like, no. Like, why would we do this? And then we also had the discussion of, how can we tell if somebody's throwing a bag in the bin if it's already out there and there's only one individual who's in the front picking up the arm and throwing it in? So we're just going to try to get ready for that, determine that in a few years. But we're going to -- luckily, we have some time with Cassella on the current agreement.
Counselor Blackstone?
In the Dover situation, right now, you know, you have a big party or something, and you can go on Wednesday or Saturday and just throw it away yourself, right?
Yes, you can.
Yeah. Can you do that in Dover now under this new system?
I believe you can. I believe if you bring a pay -- if you bring garbage to their transfer station, you still may need a pay-as-you-throw bag.
So they would have pay-as-you-throw bags as like an additional?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And I like the fact that they had recycling and garbage. I thought we had to give up recycling.
No.
And what I'm hearing here is that the three-year extension is designed to give the town time to consider its different options and to kind of come up with a proposal for the best way to move forward.
Exactly. Just an update on the fiscal year '26. We're two months in, and just so everyone knows, total revenue collected so far is $18.2 million, or 68% of the budget revenues compared to $17.3 million last year. A lot of that's because of taxes. Expenditures total at $4.35 million, or 25% of the budget, which is consistent with last year's pace of 25% as well. A lot of them are just the one-time things, transferred to capital reserve funds, insurances, bond payments. We do that to begin of the fiscal year. Again, we're stable. Nothing out of the ordinary right now. And that's it. You know, everything's pretty level. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much, Town Manager. Any other questions or discussion? Counselor Blackstone?
If you remember, the last time we did the Cassella thing, there was a kind of a startup garbage company that came in, and they wanted to, you know, they had already gotten a couple towns, I guess, and they wanted to expand. Are we going to look at them as an alternative, or are we just going to do sole source to Cassella?
We're going to do the extension, and then when the extension is over, we'll go out to bid for another -- anybody will be able to bid.
Right. Okay.
Because that's one of the big things, is if we do go to automated system, we have to make sure the companies have the equipment to do it.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments, or discussion on the Town Managers' report? Okay. Any questions or discussion on the August department reports? Counselor Lamatina?
Yeah. I noticed that, again, the welfare department did not produce a report. And usually, their reports are kind of just like a copy of what they said last month, and they just change a few numbers.
Right. I'll double-check where it is.
Yeah. I'd also like to think about maybe some way of improving the report. I'd like to see maybe in the report, current values compared to, you know, what they've done year-to-date, maybe, or something, or that type of -- thank you.
Yep.
Other discussion or comments on the department reports? Okay. Seeing none, then we will move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Counselor Blaisberg?
Arts, Culture, Tourism Commission met. There is a community sing event, October 15, 6 to 7:30, in the Newmarket High School Cafeteria. And it will be -- there will be accompaniment from Charlotte Tomah on piano. There will be musicians and some volunteers for sound, and it'll be just -- I think the closest thing that I can think of is karaoke, but it is not karaoke. They're going to have lyrics up on the big projector, and, you know, the town will just sing along. So I'm -- yeah, but it is -- it's not karaoke.
It's not karaoke.
It's much nicer than karaoke.
Yeah. It's --
You can hide your singing in this one.
One of the things, when it was proposed to the commission, one of the things that was brought up was the belief that if more than 50 people are singing together, that it sounds good, even if none of them can sing. So we're going to put that to the test. Then the Pocket Park mural, the art flip of the current art is this year going to be again during the Halloween Haunt, which is October 25. We are going to do what we've done in years past, where they'll have some pumpkin carving competition, they'll have candy for kids, maybe some other art things for people to participate in. So, you know, be on the lookout for that. The Elm Street mural, there was a grant application that went out to T-Mobile that was rejected for this year. So that money is not being considered anymore, although I believe that the plan is to apply again next year. They give money every year to lots of different causes, and this year, they -- we took a look at the people that were the ones that were selected, and there was some common characteristics that might help next year. And that is all.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Blaisberg. Questions for Counselor Blaisberg? Counselor Blackstone?
Yeah. Are they going to do that thing that Mike Provost did, where you go to the graveyard and you see dead people?
That is not, yeah, that's not the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission. That's the Newmarket Historical Society.
And yes, sir. And yes, they are doing it.
But yes, they are doing it. I am not doing it, but yes, they are.
Could you just restate the day and time for the community sing-along?
Yes, October 15th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Junior-Senior High School Cafeteria. So that's the, you know, where we, they have the other town events and stuff right in the front entrance.
Okay. Okay, um, any other committee reports this evening? Counsel Ward.
Okay, the 300th met on the 10th. Uh, you saw one of the things that was up for discussion. There was some discussion on commemoratives, um, items to put the logo on for sale, um, as long as the sale of 300 club memberships and the first New Market Notables banner, which was bought by Ann Nichols. Um, the book that was supposed to come out, that's supposed to, that's supposed to go out with this project is in its first draft, which, if you've ever edited a book, means it's not done. But it is, it, it's a, editing's a long process, I'll tell you, someone's working on the, so, but it is, there is a book, so there is, that, that's good to go. And there was a discussion on confirming license plates and plans for, and, yeah, the biggest thing was the Broadside, which was done. Uh, and then there was the Conservation Commission on the 11th. Uh, Colin Lawson was made Vice Chair, uh, here. Uh, new bike racks were, have been installed at Wigan Park, uh, Wigan Farm and Sliding Rock. And some money he has been, uh, allocated to buy some new picnic benches for Shanda Park as well. And, and there was a review of the 2026, 2027 fiscal year budget. And the Turtle Fest Steering Committee is about to be formed. Uh, I think you know someone on it.
Yeah.
And they are looking for people in the public who might be, also be interested to join the Steering Committee to take part. So, anyone interested in that can contact, uh, Chris Blackstone or the Conservation Commission if you like turtles and you wanna help turtles.
Thank you very much. Um, questions for Counsel Ward? Okay, um, any other committee reports? Counsel Lamontina.
Yep, yeah, um, Energy and Environment. A while back, we had a presentation on a potential solar array off of, um, Wildly Falls Road down by the, uh, the well down there. At the time, the, um, the thinking was it would be somewhere in the 400 to 500 kilowatt range. The town engineer and Revision Energy have done a preliminary site review and, uh, basically they've decided that, um, because of wetlands and other things, that, um, a system of that size is not doable. It'll be something potentially more in the 100 to 150 kilowatt range would be, uh, more doable. So, that's what that seems now and they're looking at how can it maybe be funded, um, if it can be funded. So that's one thing. Next week, Counsel Dornblut, um, Counsel Blackstone and I and the Chair of the Energy Committee are, will be attending a conference of local energy solutions in, um, in Manchester. Hope to get some kind of ideas what other coun, you know, counties or municipalities are doing related to energy. That's it.
Okay, questions for Counsel Lamontina? Okay, other committee reports? Counsel Dornblut.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just a very quick one. Last week, the Transportation Committee met on Wednesday. And we had a presentation, um, on the parking study, the final product, with the recommendations for, for us to review and, um, and develop. Chief Jordan participated in the, um, discussion as well and, um, brought his, uh, department's, uh, research, um, regarding, um, parking enforcement and parking meters. And we'll continue that conversation, um, and, and, and develop recommendations to, um, bring to the Town Council to, um, facilitate, um, smoother parking in town. The biggest issue, I guess, that was identified is, um, the visibility of parking lots that are not, um, on street parking. And so we'll, we'll, we'll come up with, um, a plan to, to address that and bring it here and hope that we will get that done, um, by the turn of the year.
Nice. Excellent, thank you, Counsel Dornblut. Um, questions for Counsel Dornblut?
I don't have a question, but just a, a comment that I'm really excited that we're gonna be doing something to help increase the visibility of those parking lots. We participated, um, in, in the parking study and really did find them underutilized and, and very convenient to downtown.
Just a coincidence, and I found out about that this morning when I went into the Community Development Director's office and informed him that we had $20,000 in economic development. And I suggested putting that towards an RFP for finding signs which would show where the parking is. So, they're gonna, they're gonna be issuing an RFP for design and study for a bigger project.
Okay. Excellent, thank you very much. Other questions for Counsel Dornblut? Okay, um, seeing none, any, oh, Counsel Dornblut?
I have another, um, just a little, little update. A while ago, um, we had said that we would, um, um, look at, you know, um, the Town Manager evaluation. I just wanted to say that I'm still working on that, um, reviewing how other towns are doing this. Um, there's quite a variety of, um, processes out there and the further afield you go, the, um, the more you discover. So, I have decided to restrict myself to New England because that seems the most applicable, especially with the form of town government. And, um, I think the, I'm, I'm hoping that I'll get something, um, done before, before long. Um, I, I do want to put it to bed for myself anyways. But I think, um, we can make some really helpful and manageable, um, changes that will, um, make the process, you know, more enjoyable and better and more, more constructive for everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, Counsel Glazberg.
I, Capital Improvement, uh, Committee, uh, had met three times, uh, last week, or two times last week. And, uh, there was a lot of, uh, you know, business as usual leases for trucks and things. Uh, but there were a few things that stood out to me. Um, the school district is trying to do a better job of planning ahead for projects and putting money aside for, uh, in this case, they talked a lot about, um, roofs for the different buildings and, and setting money aside way ahead of time. Which, uh, is, is a great plan and it's something I noticed when we went over the, um, the Sewer and Water CIP, that they do a really good job of, of doing that already where they planned out all their expenses like that for, for a long time. It was really impressive. Um, and the other one that, uh, stood out a bit was, um, the, well, two others, the, the library, their feasibility study. And they're, uh, trying to put some money aside to prepare for what comes out of the feasibility study. So, um, some of the things that were mentioned were, um, maybe a roof or, um, the egress, that, you know, they're, at the time, they hadn't actually received the results of the feasibility. It was supposed, they were supposed to get them later that day, but they know that there's going to be stuff on there, obviously. And then the rec department, um, they also are preparing for a feasibility study and what might be recommended that is changed and to go along with the, the things that have come up in the master plan that the town has expressed, you know, want and need for. And, uh, updates on the current rec building, because it's, uh, smaller than the town needs, most likely. And that's what the, the study will, will shed some light on. But, yeah, everything else was pretty, pretty straightforward, um, planning for the next master plan, putting money aside for that.
Okay. Questions for Counsel Glazberg? Okay, other committee, oh, Counsel Blackstone.
Just to relay a question. Steve, who literally owns the rec building and who owns the land that the rec building is on?
How's it authority?
Right, that's what I thought.
Okay. Other questions for Counsel Glazberg? Okay, uh, any other committee reports? Okay, then, um, we will move right along. Um, Counselors, there are no resolutions and ordinances in the second reading, but there are three in the first reading this evening. And the first is Resolution 2025-2026-13, that is authorizing the purchase of 11 Creighton Street using the Recreation Revolving Fund. Whereas the Town of New Market seeks to expand recreational opportunities and approve public access to the Lamprey River by acquiring the property located at 11, um, Creighton Street, tax map U3 Lot 17. And whereas the town has negotiated a purchase and sale agreement with Legacy Properties Incorporated for the acquisition of said property at a purchase price of $685,000. And whereas the Town Council has reviewed provisions of RSA 35B colon 2 and RSA 35B colon 3, which provide the legal framework for the use of the Recreation Revolving Fund and authorize municipalities to acquire property for recreation purposes. And whereas RSA 35B colon 2 specifically provides that expenditures from the Recreation Revolving Fund may be made without further appropriation for recreation and park purposes, and RSA 35B colon 3 authorizes the town to, quote, "acquire, hold, and dispose of," end quote, "property for recreation purchases, purposes, with town meeting approval required only in the case of land sales."
Skip the next WHEREs.
I can skip the next WHEREs?
Yes, that's, we doubled up on accident.
Oh, yes, you did. That is a double. Okay. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council hereby approves the purchase and sale agreement with Legacy Properties Incorporated for the property located at 11 Creighton Street, New Market, New Hampshire, in the amount of $685,000. And be it further resolved that the Town Manager is authorized to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and to take all steps reasonably required to effectuate the acquisition. And be it further resolved that the purchase shall be funded entirely through the Recreation Revolving Fund consistent with RSA 35B colon 2 and RSA 35B colon 3, without further appropriation, sponsored by Chair Conley by request. First reading September 17th, 2025.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would recommend you read the next one by title only since it's a change in the personnel policy and the length.
Okay. Fine. Um, the next resolution in the first reading is Resolution 2025-26-14, Imending Personnel Policy, Replacement of Section 4.05 Maternity Leave with Parental and Pregnancy-Related Leave Policies. I really wanted to read that one. The third resolution in the first reading is Resolution 2025-2026-15, Lead Water Service Line Replacement. Parental leave policy is so much more interesting. Um, whereas the new lead-
Turn right after I have to ask the question.
The new lead and copper rule revision. Whereas the new lead and copper rule revision require water systems to create a plan to replace water, um, lead, lead service lines. And whereas the Water Department has received $300,000 with up to 70% loan forgiveness to replace water, water lead service lines, water lead service lines?
Lead.
Lead service line. And whereas Wixon Construction was the lowest bidder with a bid of $199,000. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council authorizes a project budget of $247,000 and the Town Manager to enter into agreements with Wixon Construction and Wright Pierce to complete the lead service line replacement project. Funds for the project will come from the $300,000 loan grant received from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, sponsored by Chair Conley by request. First reading September 17th, 2025. And Town Manager, if it's possible to add that New Market Town Council to the, um, to correct that Scrivener's error in the, in that last paragraph, that would be awesome. Uh, Counsel Dornblut?
I have a quick question, um, about, we know, it always says up to a certain percentage of loan forgiveness. Is that a, uh, an expected, um, amount? It's usually hardly ever below that. It's just there for?
Yeah, just in case.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We will move right on to new business and correspondence. And item A is correspondence to the Town Council. Is there any correspondence to be read into the record this evening?
There is none.
Okay. Um, then the next item is closing comments by Town Councilors. Do any Counselors have closing comments this evening? Counsel Ward?
Um, I just briefly wanted to talk about the, uh, the, uh, it would help if I could speak. DEI Amendment. I want to, I understand the town had no say in this decision. Um, and I understand it's come down from people above us who believe there is a finite space in our shared culture for everyone. That if you speak Spanish, there's not enough room for English. If you celebrate Ramadan, that cuts hours out of Christmas. That masculinity gets cramps if the bathroom has tampons in it. I don't really see the need for the, it cutting something like this. And I know many of you are not surprised that I'm speaking on this issue. Um, I, and as I was born in this area, I'm black, I'm on the autism spectrum. Managed to get here not through DEI because no one wanted this job, so, um, that's just America, I guess. So, I don't, just wanna stress the point of DEI was never to replace, quote-unquote, "normal Americans" or give, you know, overlook good people for people who are underrepresented and overrepresented. Ugh, I can't speak tonight, it's very important. It's not to diminish you or the culture, or you or your culture by giving others a chance to express themselves or their culture. It is to give space and acceptance to those who don't spring to mind when you think of Americans, who are still Americans regardless of what some people believe. As I have just said, I spent my whole life, uh, trying to fit in, in this area. And you really don't know how important something like DEI is until you are the one forever standing outside, I, or standing out, whether you want to or not. Or trying to make yourself, uh, accommodate what everyone else wants and expects. And whatever you want and expect is supposed to be put on the back burner because you don't want to rock the boat. And it also, it gives, stuff like DEI also gave people a chance to see others who like them succeed. Even before, or even in times where before you were allowed to succeed in those areas, but it just never seemed to happen. Not talking about race, gender, or gender identity, a religion does not make the issues go away. Lead is poisonous even if we don't have a bill about lead in the water, well, lead in the pipes that we're getting rid of because we are taking care of that. Sorry. Uh, but yes, I don't, if you think of having diversity, equity, inclusion, will encourage people to listen to the better angels of their selves and be more accepting of their fellow citizens, I'm, will tell you from my own experience that it will not, it will not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ward.
I just wish my voice, and just was working tonight, so.
I heard you. Other closing comments this evening? Counsel Lamontina?
In line with Counsel Ward there said, I find it ironic that the night that we receive a copy of a proclamation written 200 years ago by a black man that created New Market, that we even have to consider an idea of going through our policies and saying, "I'm afraid of inclusion and diversity." We have to take that out. It's absolutely ridiculous. My comments.
Thank you, Counsel Lamontina. Other closing comments? Counsel Dornblut?
Well, maybe, um, also in response, I guess, because I, um, you know, read the Town Manager's report, um, kind of with, uh, it made my, um, my stomach flutter a little bit because, um, but, so the encouraging comment, I guess, is that, um, this bill passed only as a rider on the budget bill. And it is, um, quite unlikely that it would have passed on its own. And if you read the bill, which I did, read the text of the bill, um, I would call it a hack job. It's a terrible, terribly written bill. The definition of DEI is, um, not there. Um, it's defined as certain programs that advance certain things, policies and initiatives. And then further on in the bill, it speaks of DEI policies and initiatives, although DEI was just defined as policies and initiatives. So, it doesn't really flow very well. And, um, I find it, um, um, a burden to, you know, to place on all state agencies, all state, you know, subdivisions, um, political subdivisions, to issue reports and then to what end? What's the point? And who's paying for all these reports? And who's paying for all these reports? And the bill doesn't say. There is no, there's no, it's just a, "Provide us with this and then what." So, it's, it's an ornery bill. And it's, you know, a mean-spirited bill and it's not the first one that we're dealing with. And it seems to be a trend. I think it's, it's high time that we pay a little bit more attention to what's happening in Concord and who is in Concord making laws for our land.
Thank you, Counsel Dornblut. Other closing comments?
Just to stress, I wanted to stress, I know that the town itself has nothing to do, I want to make this clear, the town does not have a say in this. This is not like, this is so, I just wanted to clarify.
I was, I truly am the messenger this month.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right.
Not aimed at you.
No, I know that completely.
That's the terrible part.
Right.
I certainly don't think I can improve on anything that the other councillors have said. I will say that, I will say that having, having a diverse community makes us, makes us better. Having diverse ages and races and religions and perspectives makes us a better community. Treating people equitably is a good thing. Treating people equitably makes us better, it makes us kinder. And having an inclusive community, a community that strives to include everybody, not just a few, makes us better. I think to, mean spirit is the right, is the right, the right word. And to try to, to try to legislatively, you know, kind of scrub the concepts of diversity and the concepts of equity and the concepts of inclusion from a, from a community can, can only happen if we let it. So, let's don't.
Any other closing comments? Anyone like the last word this evening? Okay. Our next meeting then will be October 1st, 2025. And if there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned.